Uh, thank you. Um, welcome, members of the public. Our scribe, Ms. Gessio, Ms. Lauren Lynn, the planning director and Ms. Karen Carolyn Murray. Welcome to the Wednesday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, six thirty P M. Zoom virtual meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. I will now call the role, uh, Clark Brewer.
Here.
Uh, Tom Callahan.
Here.
Paul Colery. Paul Grady. Eric Potter. Amy Glassmeyer here.
Does everyone get scared off by that agenda?
Uh, we, we shall see. Uh, Ms. Lynn, would you please explain how the meeting will proceed and how the public can participate?
Absolutely. Thank you. So for members of the public wishing to address the board, we'll have a designated public comment period for each of the items on the agenda. We do ask that you use the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen. You can insert your name and address for the record. You can leave written comments, or you can just indicate you'd like to address the board, at which time, when appropriate, we'll promote you to a panelist. You can utilize your microphone and camera, and we do ask that you keep comments to a three-minute maximum. Please try not to repeat any items that have already been stated. We ask that you present new information. Uh, with that, I'll turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to give a very brief overview of the agenda for tonight. We have a very full agenda, but we also have some caveats. So, um, we have a, a number of public hearings. We have, um, and the public hearings include such items as, uh, application for approval of common driveway. Uh, and we have five large house reviews that are, are listed. We have a, uh, an A and R, which is approval not required. And we also have a land alteration special permit. So we're going to begin this meeting, um, at, in the pub, in a public hearing, uh, for an application for approval of a common driveway filed by Charles L. Smith, the third, uh, and being represented by Mr. John Cavanaro Consulting, and the subject property is ninety-four Black Horse Lane.
I thought we had the A and R first, and then the common driveway. A and R is at six thirty, common driveway is at six forty.
I, well, this is what I have on my schedule. Ms. Lynn?
Sorry, there was a revised version of the agenda that put the A and R for ninety-four Black Horse Lane before the common driveway. I thought that would be a, a better segue with the material. So I promoted Carmen Hudson from Cavanaro to speak to the application.
All right.
Good evening. Um, I'm sorry, I thought my, my video was on. Can you hear me okay?
Here you find.
Actually, my colleague Brendan Sullivan is going to present the A and R. Do you think you could make him a co-panelist, Lauren, please?
Yes, you should be.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And also, the, um, Chip's attorney, uh, Matt Watzke is present, and he was going to introduce the project. And Chip should also be, uh, present. That's Charles Smith. He's probably there under Chip Smith.
I'll take a look for Chip Smith and me. I'm not seeing him there, but I'll keep looking.
So let me make sure I understand who will be presenting. Mr. Matt Watzke is the legal representation for Mr. Charles Smith, otherwise known as Mr. Chip Smith. And the, the engineer who will be presenting is your colleague, and his name again is?
Brendan Sullivan.
Thank you very much. All right. So we have everybody then identified. So, uh, with no further ado, would, um, I presume it's going to be Mr. Sullivan who will begin?
Um, I think Matt is gonna start off.
Oh, that's fine. I'll start off. I can be very brief. Um, is, is the board able to, uh, to share a screen and put up the plan? Or should we have Brendan do that?
You're, you're expected to do that.
Okay, Brendan, can you please share the inner plan?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
And can I ask, as you, um, review the A and R plan, uh, there's a, there's a series of maps that we're going to be working with on behalf of the ninety-four Black Horse Lane. The maps are extremely dense in information. And so on, on behalf of the public, it is going to be important that you identify exactly what the maps say, so that the public is aware of how you're presenting the case.
Thank you.
That means identifying lines, identifying objects, identifying, um, uh, property lines, things which may not be commonly understood by the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so very briefly, we have, uh, the A and R plan is, Brendan, if you could highlight it, uh, proposing just to create a, a non-buildable parcel called Parcel B. Uh, if you could sort of run the, run the cursor around the perimeter of that parcel, please.
Yep.
So that parcel is mostly marsh, and we're proposing to create this parcel because we have an agreement with Anna Butter to simply convey, uh, that portion of land to the butter as a non-buildable parcel. And, uh, I think as, I, I don't know, Attorney Murray was aware I had already signed in, but like the, the case law is clear that you're allowed to, to file an A and R plan and create parcels, and where they're not intended as a building parcel, uh, you just mark it as non-buildable, and then it's perfectly permissible. So that's, that's the extent of it. Uh, the intent is, is actually not to record this immediately, but to, to have it available for conveyance. My hope is that we get through the common driveway permitting process, sometime fairly soon, and are able to, to then record this, uh, in conjunction with that common driveway plan. Uh, Brendan, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, I don't think so. Um, so this, this is, um, um, as Ms. Watzke said, Attorney Watzke said, the, um, this is, um, part of other land that is owned by Charles Smith, um, and it butts, um, Marion Murphy's prop, property at the end of Cedar Lane, uh, who typically, who owns a strip that goes out to her dock out in the Gulf River currently. Um, so she wanted some additional land, uh, for privacy and vistas. Um, so that's really, you know, the reason why we're creating this parcel B.
All right, um, let me ask individual planning board members, to, uh, weigh in on this issue. Mr. Callahan?
Hold on. Sorry. Um, I, I don't know. I have a problem with, you know, Parcel A is going to remain, I assume, a buildable lot.
Not by itself, it won't, no.
It won't?
Not by itself, no.
What's, what does that mean?
Parcel A is mostly wetlands, but, uh, the, 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 the common driveway plan will show three additional homes being serviced by the common driveway. Parcel A by itself will not be one of them. It ultimately will be combined with other land.
All right. We, we, on this plan, where is the frontage for Parcel A?
Parcel A doesn't currently have frontage on, on any public way. Parcel A is a single existing lot that's grandfathered under the zoning, um, and that has rights to, uh, to the easement to, uh, to access Black Horse Lane. But Parcel A is not going to have a house on it by itself, so it almost doesn't matter.
All right. All right. I'd like to hear from Carolyn about this.
I'm sorry.
Not to put you on the spot, Carol.
Uh, if I may interject, actually, because this, this will come up in the common driveway application. Uh, what, what is shown, he has Parcel A, and this is just a, a new nomenclature, so that it's easy for you to see the, you know, the, the whole, the whole Parcel A and Parcel B are one common lot today, and that's called, uh, Lot E. So there, there are so many lots here, and you will see this during the common driveway presentation. Uh, but that Parcel A, which is comprised, you know, it comprises that, um, twenty-foot easement at the bottom, as well as a forty-easement at the bottom, all of that is Parcel A. And there will be, there will be a dwelling, the way I show it anyways on my plan, there will be a dwelling there. But, once again, the common driveway is just for the common driveway, the concept dwellings where, uh, I'm, I'm showing them there because I think they're helpful for you to envision what we are planning. Um, but, uh, they're just concepts, right?
Yeah, Carmen, tha- thank you for that clarification. Actually, Brendan, since you're controlling this, can you just highlight the, the stone wall uh, that's in the middle of the Parcel A? So Parcel A is, is, when you see the common drive plan, you'll see it referred to as part, as Lot E. The, the, the lot line extends down to the north. So it includes the upland area. That's Parcel seven B.
All very confusing. I think that in the end of the day, the two applications uh, involve a subdivision, so. Again, I'll, I'll defer to Carolyn's. I'd like to hear Carolyn's opinion on this.
Um, Tom, before we do that, can we have Clark?
Yeah, no, I, I didn't, I didn't want to go out of order, but I ultimately.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, what we're being asked to do is to endorse a plan that shows a division of land, that we agree this is not a subdivision on, that would be under the subdivision control laws, approval not required under subdivision control laws. So, um, whether this is a thirty thousand square foot, uh, parcel, or a, a, a thirty square foot, uh, parcel, a sliver of land that one, um, landowner conveys to another landowner, this is exactly what, uh, this is the textbook A and R. I, I think that the, I'll make a motion to endorse it right now.
Well, let's.
But I would like one caveat. I think we should, um, it should be labeled before it gets signed, not a buildable lot.
I agree.
And that get, that gets rid of the frontage question, as well as any access question.
All right. Well, before we, um, pursue it, and I'd like to hear, uh, from our legal counsel, Ms. Murray.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Um, I, I shared, uh, with the planning director just prior to tonight's meeting, um, a, a, an appeals court decision that I thought might help the board in terms of, um, visualizing how a court has ruled on a, any similar case. And I don't know, Lauren, if you're able to screen share, um, that case and, and zoom to the very end where, um, the actual plan is shown in the decision.
I just did a few minutes to see if I can do that. My work computer, I'm actually on two different computers right now for screen sharing. So, hold on a minute, please.
It's normally how I operate, Lauren, so I'm sorry.
Did that get sent to us?
No, I had just sent it to Lauren so that it could be put up on the screen and just shared. But, um, while Lauren is looking to.
What's the site, what's the site of the case?
It, it is Crecony's versus the Planning Board of Drakeheads. And it's thirty-nine Mass App Court two sixty-four. It's a nineteen ninety-five case, and, um, it was a plan that took one lot to, to be divided into three parcels, but two of the parcels, um, were to be labeled not a building lot. They were just, um, being carved out for the purpose of conveying to a butters. Um, and the court in that case had found that, you know, this was a single lot plan, and it was not actually a subdivision. And therefore, it was entitled to the A and R endorsement. And when I looked at this earlier today, this was the case that kind of came to mind for me that if we label, um, certainly have to label Parcel B as not a buildable lot. Um, I think the board could also label Parcel A, not a buildable art, lot. You know, if Parcel A is going to have to be combined with, uh, commonly held land for purposes of development or whatever, the other application is that's pending. Um, the board could endorse this with the notation, um, that this is not creating any buildable lots. Thanks, Lauren. So it's all the way to the end. There is right there, and, um, not necessarily terribly easy to see on the screen, I realize, but as you see that kind of diagonal line cutting across, um, the, um, you know, the two lots that are at the bottom of your screen that have, um, quite a bit of typing on them, they both say, you know, not a buildable lot, uh, for conveyance purposes only.
All right. So, um, in the interest, because this is, uh, a multi-part discussion of this particular geography tonight, um, look, uh, Carolyn, could you provide a small, brief summary for the public so they understand what we're doing and how it fits in to the development process?
Sure. Um, you know, whenever anybody wants to create a new lot, um, or divide property, we have to look at it because the subdivision control law is in effect in Cohasset. We have to evaluate it under the subdivision control law. Now, a subset of the subdivision control law is that, is not only what is a subdivision, but it is also what is not a subdivision. And what we're, we're referring to as an A and R plan is what the statute calls an approval under the subdivision control law, not required plan. And in the definition of a subdivision, the statute actually talks about what is not a subdivision. Um, and it includes, uh, the division of a tract of land, um, that when so divided, has frontage on a public way or a way that, that, um, has been certified as open and maintains as a public way, a way shown on a previously approved subdivision control law plan, or a way that existed before the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Cohasset that has, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient with suitable grades and construction um, for vehicular traffic needs to be able to access, um, the so-called buildable portion of the lot. Um, the reason I've shared the Crecony's case with you this evening is there are also situations where, um, landowners are not necessarily looking to divide their lots for the purposes of creating a buildable lot, but they are looking to, um, perhaps sell off a sliver of land to an abutter, as is the case here. Um, in which case, it's still within the board's authority to endorse an A and R plan with, uh, showing a lot that doesn't comply with zoning, or showing a lot that, um, does not have frontage, as long as the board makes it clear by noting on the plan that it is not a buildable lot, or that the lot is not buildable, but is, uh, for this, the endorsement is for conveyance purposes only.
All right. Thank you. I think that's helpful for the public to understand, because we deal with A and Rs a lot, and, um, it takes a while to figure out what that actually means.
I've made a motion. There's a motion on the table.
Well.
Mr. Brewer, I wanted to proceed first in making sure that we have everyone's opinions before we act. Uh, Mr. Callahan?
So are we going to make the endorsement on both of these lots, that they're not buildable and are for conveyance purposes only? I, I'm, you know, I'm still troubled by what's happening with this Lot A.
Madam Chairman, may I respond?
Uh, yes, you may.
Thank you. So, the, the, the two parcels that you're seeing there in the A and R are in existing Lot E, which, which has the right of access. It's a, it's a single existing lot. It has the right of access to, uh, Black Horse Lane, and we're proposing for it to have the common drive provide access to it. Our intent is not to record the A and R plan until after the common drive approval is, is granted. And so there would be no change in that lot until after the common driveway is in place. So the common drive, uh, if approved, would, would be providing access to lots as they exist today. Um, that's what's only after that's in place that this additional parcel would be carved off for the abutter.
Then doesn't that, doesn't that then get us into the discussion of adequacy of that way? That access?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question.
I, doesn't that get us into the discussion of the adequacy of the access that's going to go to the Lot A portion of this?
That's what the common drive application will be all about, yeah.
All right. Well, I, I, I find this way too confusing with the two, uh, applications. And, uh, right now, I'm inclined not to endorse this.
So we have a motion. Would you like to, um, Tom, would you like to relate to the motion? Um, your.
Somebody has to second it.
Thank you, Clark. I understand that. And if there is no sex, uh, uh, second, then the motion dies.
That's right.
All right. So then it looks as if there's no, there is no, uh.
Did you ask for a second? We could ask for a se- you could, as the official chairperson, you could ask for a second.
Yes, um, is there a second to the motion?
Not for me.
Wow. Okay, then we move on to the next agenda item.
Carolyn, do we need to make an?
I would, I would, I would follow this up then with a motion to deny and state some basis for the denial. Or unless there's another motion you'd like to offer, Tom, such as.
Well, I, I, I.
With, uh, no, no buildable lot noted on both.
I, I, I mean, in, in the grand scheme of things, I think this should have come after the common driveway application, but such, so, so be it. Uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, well, I'll, I'll make a motion that it, it be endorsed, but with both lots noted as non-buildable and for conveyancing purposes only.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan?
I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I. All right, let's move on to the next item, which is a public hearing for a common drive application for approval filed by Mr. Charles L. Smith, and, uh, being represented by Cavanaro Consulting. The subject property is ninety-four Black Horse Lane. Um, because our, um, uh, member is not present to read the, um, public hearing, can I ask the, the vice chair to read the comment, the, uh, public hearing notice?
If I can read it on my screen, sure.
Otherwise, I can read it.
Go ahead. If, if Lauren can put it up. I don't have it in front of me.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I'm sorry, I, my internet connection broke out for a little bit. I had two, one point that I wanted to make, an administrative item.
All right.
This is listed as, on the agenda as a public hearing. That was a mistake. There is not a public hearing. The common drive does not require a public hearing process. So this is just an application for a common drive, just.
All right.
Clarification sake, I will read the public hearing notice if that's acceptable to all of you, because I have it up on my other computer.
Thank you. Perfect.
Um, let's see. Actually, I'm sorry. Never mind. There's no public hearing notice because it's not a public hearing. So you can begin.
All right. Um, so let's move on then, and can, um, the team working with Mr. Campbell identify who will be speaking and what they will be, um, responsible for?
Yes, good evening. Um, I am Carmen Hudson from Cavanaro Consulting. I am the engineer in charge of this project. I represent Mr. Charles Smith, and I am joined tonight by Mr. Charles Smith and his attorney, Matt Watzke. Um, I will be doing the presentation of the project. However, uh, Matt is going to do an introduction of, uh, of the project and give a little bit more history about it. Matt?
That, thank you, Carmen. Uh, so I, I'll be brief. Uh, you'll recall that this property was the subject of a preliminary subdivision application uh, several months ago, uh, and following the, uh, the, the hearing that the board had on that preliminary subdivision, uh, we opened the, the, the topic with the board. Uh, would the board prefer to see common drive, uh, for this land rather than, uh, full definitive subdivision plan? And the feedback we got from the board was, uh, in support of, was favorable, uh, to our presenting a common drive plan. So that's what we've prepared and have submitted. The intention is to, is to, uh, uh, not create new lots. Uh, so that's why we can do this without a subdivision, but to provide a common drive that provides the access to the, these, uh, each of these single lots that has the benefit of the zoning exemption and the, uh, the Cohasset zoning bylaw. And with that, I'll hand off to Carmen, who can kind of walk you through, so that you can see which lots, uh, we're talking about and, and where the common drive will go.
Thank you, Matt. Um, let me just zoom in a little bit. This is the existing condition, uh, layout of the, of the lot. It has several parcels. Uh, this is Lot F. I don't know, can you see my cursor, or should I?
Yeah, yes.
You can. Okay, great. So at the, at the very entrance with that twenty-foot, uh, right-of-way easement, uh, that serves seventy, eighty, and ninety, uh, Black Horse Lane is Lot F. Lot eight is over here. This strip of land is Lot B two. It continues all the way to Meanlo Water. Uh, the, the land here where the houses and the circular driveway, the existing circular driveway R, uh, is Lot C, and it also goes through Meanlo Water. This large piece of parcel is Lot D. This large piece of parcel is Lot E. And the A and R that we were just discussing before was for this Lot E, but the, the portion of Lot E that was being carved was only this portion, and the, some of the so much was being proposed to be transferred to Marion Murphy. But in any case, all of this lot is Lot E. This small triangular lot is Lot A six. This is Lot five. This other lot over here is seven A, and I'm sorry, this was six A. And actually, this portion of Lot E, Lot E was created after, I believe it was in nineteen thirty-six. But there were two lots before Lot E, and there were seven B and six A. So it's a conglomerate of just several lots. And the reason that we are going in front of you for a common driveway and not a subdivision road is because these are very old lots. Uh, so most of them were created in nineteen twenty-six, some were created in nineteen thirty-six. Um, and, uh, so what happens here is that there are several lots that actually conformed with the requirements of the single lot exemption that's section eight-three in the zoning bylaw. And that is the reason why, even though none of these lots, none of them have frontage on Black Horse Lane, um, they still qualify for a single lot exemption. Black Horse Lane, um, actually ends here. That's Black Horse Lane. And it ends at the beginning of, um, of the lot that Jack Livingston owns. That is number seventy, Black Horse Lane, and that's a pla- a public road that is only, uh, twenty feet in width. That's the, the right-of-way. So, having gone through the many lots, as I mentioned before, they are protected under the single lot exemption, many of them, uh, but none of them have frontage whatsoever. Um, and on Friday, we received a letter from your review engineer from Western Sampson.
Actually, Carmen, before, before you move on to that, I just wanted to emphasize that, uh, Lot E, which was, which was made a single lot by recording a plan, uh, was, was a combination of the lots, if you could point it out, Carmen, Lots seven B and six B. Uh, so although those, those lot designations are sort of grayed out, the actual parcel is Lot E, and it combines, it combined all of them, and that was prior to zoning.
Yes, that was still prior to nineteen fifty-five. Um, if you take a look at the title, the title sheet, these are all of the lots that comprise Mr. Smith's property. Um, but what I was mentioning is that on Friday, we received, um, a letter from your review engineer from Western Sampson. And I was able to, I have not been able to. And I was able to, I have not been able to provide a, a written response for his comments. But I was able to make some changes on the plan and have some, uh, have a response for his comments. And I think it would be helpful to go through them after I show you what the proposed common driveway will look like.
So let, let me just say that this will be considered new information since it was not received by us in written form. So it will be advisory, but it is not something that we're going to be able to act on.
Okay, absolutely. That makes sense. So this is just looking at not just the lot layout, because yes, there is a lot of information. So this sheet simply lets you know what the, the lots are and how many there are. This sheet right here shows you the existing conditions of the lot. And you can also see what these lots are doing. So lot C right here is where the house is. Lot F is where the entrance is, where that shared driveway is that serves number seventy, eighty, and number ninety, as well as number ninety-four. And these are all of the other lots that Mr. Smith owns as well. So let me go to the next page.
Can I, can I ask, uh, as you go through this?
Yes.
It's going to be essential that we understand the use of these lots as you describe them. So you've said that they all, uh, conform to the single lot exemption.
Uh, most of them.
Okay, so, so it's really, the, these details are going to be extremely important for us to be able to follow you and to understand what you're trying to do.
And I think this, this, uh, sheet four of six will, uh, will shed a lot of light on that for you.
So what we are proposing is to keep the lots the way they are. Uh, but in order to provide actual physical ad access to this existing lots and be able to build on them, we're proposing a common driveway. So from the end of this shared driveway, this is that the, the driveway that is shared by number seventy, number eighty, and number ninety, as well as number ninety-four. We're proposing to extend this driveway and serve nine, number ninety-four and three new houses or three new, three new, um, developments by this extension. Uh, this extension is about two hundred and twenty feet in length. Um, and it would just be a, a shared driveway. What is a common driveway for, for lots, which would be ninety-four and three extra lots. So as you see, not all of the lots will be used, um, even though they might be protected under the single lot exemption. Uh, the intention is to, to be able to use the land, but also um, maintain the character of the neighborhood. Um, so not to make the development too dense. Um, so this is really why we are in front of you, this common driveway. We don't have to show any proposed driveways to dwellings or any dwellings. I just put these here just so that you would have an idea of what this common driveway is meant to do. It is meant to serve dwellings. I don't know if this dwelling will be exactly here or on the other side. Um, but I just wanted to show you that this is what the concept is. So we are, we're, uh, what we're trying to show here are that there will be a total of three new dwellings that will be served by this common driveway. And each of those dwellings will abide by the zoning requirements, which in this case would just be the, the side setbacks, the side property setbacks. Because since there is no frontage, there is no front property boundary, therefore there's no rear property boundary. And all of these boundaries of every one of these lots are just side property boundaries. And that is what we're showing here, three dwellings that are at least twenty feet from each of the property boundaries of the existing lots. Um, and this common driveway, uh, will just be about two hundred and twenty feet. And, uh, and, uh, you know, it will conform to today's requirements. And if I just may, uh, go over the, the letter that we received from the review engineer and explain how we are going to conform to the requirements of the, the common driveway regulations and how we're going to address his, um, his comments, if I may?
Um, yes, you may.
Okay, so I am going to read, uh, the comments of Ja- James Pearson and James Rorden of Western and Sampson, received on Friday. The first comment was a common driveway.
Excuse me, but you know what? I think this is actually not going quite the way it should. We have our peer reviewer here. And our peer reviewer should present the, the, the conversation.
Okay.
Sort of, we're kind of blending things together, and that's not going to be helpful in the end.
Okay.
So we will ask to have our, um, peer review please present, um, the discussion.
Okay, uh, what I can do is, um, show you what the peer reviewer, uh, saw, which was this original set of plans. You see in this, in, in this sheet, I was showing a twenty-foot, twenty-foot wide easement for the proposed common driveway. One of his comments was to widen it to forty feet, which is in the requirements, and we are proposing to widen it as required. Uh, there were other small comments regarding, uh, notes and dimensions. And we, we have, we have done that, and we're planning to, uh, submit revised, revised set of plans like this that addresses.
So, so we're actually not doing what I asked, which is I would like to have our peer review respond to, to this first, and then, then you can make your comments to what you have configured based on the peer review comments. That should be the right order.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren, will you please promote our peer review? Jim Riordan is with us.
Thank you very much, uh, Chair Glassmeyer. Um, uh, if I can share my screen, I think I can do it over the top of this. So I'll go through my comments. Nope, uh, actually, the other, uh,
Screen has.
Carmen has to pull hers down.
I just fixed that, Jim.
Thank you. Okay, obviously, we're talking about ninety-four Black Horse Lane and this com- common driveway peer review, excuse me. Um, as was shown previously, this is the location of, uh, the proposed, the post-common driveway. Uh, it's about eleven-point-three acres, uh, in size, the lots in, in combination. This is in, uh, FEMA firm, uh, zone A E, uh, but it's not in the floodplain itself. Um, there is an existing driveway that's, uh, about twelve feet wide. And, uh, there is a right-of-way that's about twenty feet wide. Um, the proposal is to widen that driveway to fifteen feet. And, uh, to extend, uh, as was noted previously, this area along here. Hopefully you can see my cursor, uh, about two hundred and, uh, twenty feet, I think, was, uh, what, uh, the applicant said. Uh, we reviewed this in accordance with the common driveway minimum standards. And these are the materials that we reviewed. This is also listed in our peer review letter. Um, so here is a quick summary of our comments. Um, one was already noted, which is showing, uh, the forty-foot wide, uh, permanent easement on the plan and recording that, uh, with Norfolk County, uh, uh, registry and providing evidence of that. Uh, the common scale and dimensions of the turnaround on the plan, so, um, it was a little difficult to tell whether those were accurate or not. Uh, we wanted confirmation of that. Uh, we would, uh, recommend that as part of the order of conditions, that the highway, highway sur- uh, surveyor, uh, inspect the, um, the common driveway. We'd recommend including notes specifying the compaction, uh, gravel material gradation and other, uh, specific requirements regarding the paving. We'd also ask that the applicant provide information on the plans indicating that the slopes are to be stabilized with a minimum of three inches alone, uh, and seeded with grass. We'd also ask, uh, that they provide in, uh, information, indication uh, regarding the characteristics of the underlying soil with respect to their ability to infiltrate stormwater. Since, uh, stormwater BMPs proposed, um, would, uh, would include infiltration as part of the treatment capacity. We'd ask, uh, for an explanation of the rationale for the town to accept the new length of Black Horse Lane or revise the proposal to ensure compliance with standards. Um, we would ask for a call-out to indicate the length of the dead-end created. Uh, it, it appears like it was kind of butting right up against fifteen hundred feet. Uh, and, um, so we would ask for that call-out to ensure that it's, that whatever is created, uh, as a dead-end is not longer than fifteen hundred feet. Um, we'd also ask for rule-based justification of the start and endpoints of that dead-end. Um, so that the town can be assured of the, uh, the appropriateness of the length. Um, we'd ask for an explanation of how standard frontage requirements will be met since the common driveway cannot be used for frontage. Uh, and we would ask for a revision of the plan set to relocate or eliminate the concept dwellings. Um, this is because, uh, the concept dwellings, it, they imply that houses are going in those locations. And, um, uh, we think that that, that that presents, uh, potential, potential hazard for you folks that, that somebody comes back and says, well, these were presented in this common driveway plan, and therefore we can put them there. Um, so, uh, we would recommend eliminating those. Although, you know, it was interesting to see those locations. Um, and we'd also ask that all the, uh, existing easements are on the proposed plans as well as on the existing conditions. Um, we noticed a conflict, uh, between one of those concept dwellings and one of the easements um, that, uh, that was shown on existing conditions. Uh, that concludes our, uh, comments and our requests.
Right, thank you. What I'd like to do now is to hear from the planning board members. And I'll begin with Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, Jim, a quick confirmation. What is the, what is the length of this common driveway? Uh, from the end of Black Horse Lane Public Way uh, to the, to the hammerhead. It, it looks like there's, there's an easement over the Butters, uh, property, then there's an easement over this long skinny irregular parcel. And then, uh, easement's over, over several parcels for the hammerhead, uh, T, um, shape. Can you tell me what the, what that overall length is?
So are you, uh, Clark, are you, uh?
Yeah, right there, right there.
From here to here?
That's, that's the end of the public way portion of Black Horse Lane. And then, and then they have addresses that are Black Horse Lane, but those are, I think, for convenience, because this, the remainder, um, of this common driveway that's being upgraded and extended is not technically Black Horse Lane. It's definitely not the public way portion of Black Horse Lane, although it may be, uh, known as Black Horse Lane, the private portion. But can you tell me how long it is?
Um, so, uh, so again, uh, from here to, I guess, here, is that what you're talking about, Clark?
No, no, all the way to the end of the T.
All the end of, okay. From here to here, uh, it's about two hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
Two hundred and nineteen feet is what we, what we measured. I don't think we measured from there to there, but.
Is it, is it less than seven hundred and fifty feet?
Yes, it's less than six hundred and ninety feet.
Less than sev- it's six hundred and ninety feet? Okay, I just wanted to know if it was less than seven hundred and fifty feet, because seven hundred and fifty feet is the limit, um, uh, the limit of a, of a, uh, common driveway length.
Yes, this, this is a common driveway. It's not a, it's not an extension of the public way.
No.
It's just a shared driveway.
No, it's, it's got two components to it, but it's, uh, it's a common driveway, one that, part that's being upgraded and another part that's being created.
That's correct.
Yes.
But it's all from the public way, and it's less than seven hundred and fifty feet. I think that's the important point.
Yes.
Uh, and then the other, uh, the other point for the, for the board to grapple with is there are three existing houses that are being served by this. And the, 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 the plan shows three additional concept, uh, or concept dwelling. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, but I, I, I believe that there is a house under construction on number ninety, which is between, uh, number eighty and Chip's current house at ninety-four.
Okay, and, and number seventy doesn't use this at all as their common driveway, because they have their own common driveway that dead-ends into the end of Black Horse Lane Public Way, right?
That's.
I, I believe so, yes.
So, so there's two existing houses and then the potential for four, um, new houses?
Yes.
Okay, and so, I mean, the, the, the common driveway standards has a standard for three to five houses and then six to, six to nine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so are you using the three to five?
That's what I was using.
Okay.
Um, because we weren't sure, um, about the, that shared driveway uh, in front of number seventy, number eighty, and number ninety, um, as far as what the status of that was. Uh, so just starting from where the work would begin, serving ninety-four and the three new dwellings. That's why we are showing the easement beginning there.
Okay, so, so you're making the assumption that, um, seventy, eighty, and ninety will not be using this. Even though they use the, they use this, uh, to, to get an A and R, uh, several years ago, I guess.
No, no. If, I, I, to, to, may, may I, Madam Chairman?
Well, well, wait a minute.
Yes, let, let, uh.
Attorney Watzke, you would, you would, uh, make any comments, um, to the chair?
Yes, that's what I was asking the chair.
Back and forth. Um, I just want to make all, all of my comments, um, that, that your common driveway is for one existing house and three potential new houses. And does not include access for seventy, eighty, or ninety lots. One being seventy being, having an existing old house and eighty having a new house. So you're assuming those aren't using this common driveway. And they're not a part of this. Is that the assumption?
Part of the plan, yes.
It's not, it's not a trick question. It's just that.
We, we need, I, I, I would ask the chair for permission to respond.
Um, what, Clark, do you want to hold that? You want the question?
No, I, I like to hear what.
Continue.
I like to hear what Attorney Watzke has to say. Those are, those are my main comments. I mean, I have no problem with the, with the concept and the, and the T for turning around. Um, it, it's just that who, who's really going to be using this, this thing? And is it more than, uh, five is my question. So let's hear what the attorney has to say.
Okay, thank you. Well, Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Right, proceed.
Um, it may be easier to do this if, if Carmen can display a plan, but, um, we, we did the math, we did the math on the length of the, the driveway both ways. We measured from the existing end of the public way of Black Horse Lane. of Black Horse Lane to the end of the T. Yeah, you can use this. No. There, yeah, so so we measured from the existing end of Black Horse Lane to the end of the T.
I wanted to draw a line.
You're trying to draw a line.
I was go I was trying to, but I'll abort that just with my cursor. This is the end of the public way.
Yeah.
And this is the existing driveway. As it serves number eighty, eighty right here and number ninety. Well, there's there's nothing right now in number ninety. I think there may be a foundation now. I am not sure. And number ninety four, the driveway ends there and we were what we wanted to do is at this point start a shared common driveway for ninety four and three new lots. I believe what Clark was mentioning was to to begin the common driveway here. If that is the case, then we would have over five five lots. We would have four lots here plus the two existing. So that would be six lots. And at that point, yes, the requirements would be different because instead of a twelve foot wide pavement, we would need a fifteen foot wide pavement. But we we want, we we need to have direction from from you, from from the board as far as is this portion of the driveway instead of in in front of seventy, eighty and ninety, a shared driveway? And if so, then we would begin here. It's still a live driveway of this length is less than seven hundred and fifty feet. So it would still conform lengthwise, but then the width the the width of the pavement would have to change if it's serving more than five houses.
Right, of course, I'm not designing your project. The other way to do that is to put a twelve foot shared driveway for number eighty and ninety and then just go about what you're doing right now.
The easiest thing might be just to if if the board, once again, we we need direction from from you, from all of you, and if the board indicates to us that at the end of this Black Horse Lane Public Way begins a common driveway, then we would have to just we will have to change the entire common driveway on Mr. Smith's land to have a fifteen feet of of pavement length. I think they need also three foot shoulders. There are small changes, but they there would be changes.
Well, well, you were showing it being widened to fifteen feet anyway.
Yes, I was I was showing.
It's twelve foot existing and and so to to be from six to nine houses, you have to add three feet to the fifteen feet to have eighteen feet of pavement.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's what I meant, eighteen. Right now I am showing fifteen.
Yep, that certainly seems like that's what we're looking at, but I'd I'd like to see what some of the other planning board members have for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Callahan?
I I so let me ask you this, this portion that goes from Black Horse Lane up to this new extension, is Mr. Smith on all of that?
Yes.
Yes.
I I'm troubled by this. I I my my understanding of the pattern of development here is it could potentially be nine houses served by this. And I don't and and I just think this is, I don't know where you got the idea that there was encouragement to go this route. I don't recall that, but I could be corrected. But I I think this is exceeding our limits. I I think our bylaw is in front of this. I mean, our regulation isn't a front to the subdivision control law by itself in allowing up to eight lots, but I I think this has the potential of serving nine houses.
Right. Madam Chairman, may I respond?
And that so, you know, I I have a problem with that and I also have a problem of how all of this would be developed with lots with zero frontage on a way. And I I, you know, this is the first time I'm hearing the single lot exemption applies. I'd like an opinion from Attorney Watzke, Attorney Murray and and the zoning board on that one. Because I'm not seeing it and I'm not seeing that, you know, it requires a lot of history about the developments of these lots, but I I'm troubled that this is going around the subdivision control law.
If I if I may, if I may just say one thing, the current common driveway regulations do not allow nine houses. They allow up to eight houses.
That's my point.
That's true, that's true, but unfortunately, in this instance, we're dealing with what's now and what could happen in the future. Let me finish, please. The prospect that Mr. Callahan is trying to articulate is what could happen, not what you have stated now. So go ahead, Mr. Watzke.
Thank you, thank you. So, yes, we 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 recognize that there are additional lots there. What we what we presented to you, what we discussed with the planning board following the the preliminary subdivision plan was that we would come in with a common drive and limit it to the total of three new houses. And it's a simple matter of having an agreement that a condition of the approval of the common drive will include that there's a restriction on the on the further development of the property to have only these three additional houses and we will put deed restrictions on it so that Mr. Callahan's concern about a total of nine could not come to fruition.
Yeah, but you don't you don't control JAK LLC's property. That's the one that has the potential for further development. I mean, they sought further subdivision of number seventy through an A and R process. We, you know, frankly, this board made a mistake in two thousand seventeen A and Ring anything on this on this this right of way. You know, so you you can't bind the other property on it, so I I.
So, Madam Chairman, may I address that as well?
Uh, yes.
Okay, he's quite correct. We we don't control that, but the the alternative to a common driveway, which which is premised on not changing the lot lines and not creating a new public way that creates frontage is that it's providing access to the existing lots on Mr. Smith's property. So the alternative to a common driveway here is for us to go forward with a definitive subdivision plan that does create frontage and that would create the frontage for JAK to divide up his lots however he wishes. So going forward with the common driveway as we're presenting it does not create legal frontage for him and just as we're using only the lots that already exist, and I'd be glad to give you the legal opinion about the single lot exemption. We're actually, we we would actually be reducing the number of potential houses on this as compared to the potential development, given the number of lots that exist, and we're not creating the opportunity by doing this common driveway of any any new development by right on the on the adjacent property owners land.
All right, I I we are now at seven thirty, so we have taken a full hour to get to this point. We have our own attorney here that would it would be appropriate for Ms. Murray to weigh in. We also have public commentary to address as well. And I'd like to see us move this through through quickly. I I will say my own feeling about it is in light of new information that is response to our peer review, this obviously would need to be continued. So the the question is, let's try to get the basic information out and then see where we go. Ms. Murray?
Madam Chair, I don't actually have anything to weigh in on. If anything, I think I have more questions than anything. I haven't seen anything about the single lot exemption issue. And I I do think that there's a valid point here that even though the common driveway proposal may limit the number of house slots versus a conventional subdivision. I I'd I'd like to hear more about what, if anything, I understand we can certainly put this restriction on Mr. Smith's slots because he's before us. I still don't see how that prevents JAK LLC from trying to do something similar in the future. I suppose it's just a matter of the it's all within the planning board's discretion at that point. But I don't have anything further to add at this point, Madam Chair.
I've just got one more comment on this, that that the access for seventy has is is separate from this. Eighty and ninety is, you know, it it seems as if the 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 regulation limits to five for the size that's designed. If if we approved it, I think now that the only the existing house at eighty Black Horse Lane and then it would be up for grabs. Who who gets a who files for building permit first between ninety and the three concept dwellings? I think it does make sense to show a forty foot easement going all the way to the public public way because I believe that's the intent of the regulation. And I think we should continue this to a date certain and allow the 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 applicant's team to make some revisions and 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 follow up on comments of planning board members and council.
One one piece of guidance that I would like to receive from the board in order to be able to address everything or revise the plans further is should we begin then at the end of Black Horse Lane, which is right there? And begin and start the common driveway at that point? Should we show that?
You can't, you can't extend a common, you can't put a common driveway attached to a common driveway. We have to consider the whole thing.
It's, yeah, it's one common driveway, not a daisy chain common driveway.
Okay, so so therefore we would, we will show on Mr. Smith's property a forty foot easement that begins here, right? Okay, okay, and another thing is, at this point, at the very beginning, while Jack Livingston's property, the driveway is right there, it's really I maybe at that point, it's still a common driveway because it's serving, oh, no.
Yeah, you would just have to get an easement from that from that owner as a part of your due diligence. Okay, you're good then.
But I'm my question is, if it if it already serves one, two, three, so that's seventy, eighty, ninety, ninety four, four houses plus three more would be seven houses, which still which would be just under the maximum number of houses served by a common driveway. So my point being that Mr. Livingston, by changing his property boundaries back in two thousand seventeen, any any ancient lots that would have benefited from the single lot exemption cannot benefit anymore because he changed the lines. In order for a lot to to benefit from the single lot exemption, it had to be conforming to the then current zoning requirements at the time of the lot's creation. And Mr. Livingston changed his lots in two thousand seventeen. I doubt that he has any lots left that were in existence prior to nineteen fifty five when the Bible was.
So if you if you could allow me, please, for the sake of public participation, I'd like to allow at least some of the public comments to be made. And the second thing that I would say is it's clear we have work to do. It's clear we need to figure out exactly what is the right thing to do, and that's why we have a building inspector and a planning department and they're going to be able to work with you to figure out what's the best possible outcome for everyone. My own personal feeling is is that we're talking about building a very small road, very large number of people and potentially large number of cars. So I'm going to bring that issue up over and over again until we can get this sized in the right way relative to the prospect of the number of houses that will ultimately be built here. With that said, I'd like to move to the public comments, and I know we I know we have lots of people and I know we're not going to be able to to look at them all. But Lauren, can you please work with that?
I'm at, I'm sure, sorry, you can see I'm on here three times. I'm having some difficulty with my internet connection today. But I've asked K Heffernan Kathleen Heffernan of Eighty Eight Nichols Road to speak to the board.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Heffernan.
Miss Heffernan, are you with them?
What I see here is she's asking, do we need? Yes, we can. Go ahead.
My name is Kathleen Heffernan and I was wondering about you had talked about Black Horse Lane and then the extension of it, you've referred to it as a private way. You've referred to it as the existing common driveway. Is there any title search that could be done to know exactly what this is? Is it an easement?
The answer to your question is yes, the legal information can be collected to determine exactly what this is. And you're right, we have, and I know that the applicant has multiple maps that have different language used to describe that particular piece of blacktop. So as part of the further investigation and process that we're going to go through, we will be able to identify exactly what it is.
Madam Chairman, is it the planning board that's doing that or is it the applicant?
Well, in in all cases, it will be the applicant who will be collecting the information.
Thank you.
It will be verified by the town staff and the town council, but it is the responsibility of the applicant to provide the information necessary for us to make a good decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's no further comment that I see from the public right now.
All right. Mr. Callahan?
I just I just want to summarize some of the legal things that I'd like to see. Matt, I'd love to see your opinion, you know, brief, but how the single lot exemption comes into play. I'd like then for Carolyn to weigh in on that and I'd like our zoning board to weigh in on that. There was mention of various easements. I'd also like to see the easements, the actual easements themselves, of any easements that are in play here. You know, and and I get the point about, you know, that a subdivision may actually lead to more development, but you know, the the rules are the rules and, you know, it's it's primarily done for safety and the adequacy of access. And, you know, this is, the the only reason is more development. I mean, this is a compound that if this single lot exemptions in play, I'm going to guess it's because of Cohasset's unique exception to it, which continues to bite us. Our fifty foot frontage continues to bite us. And, you know, it's this this is this whole property is the poster boy for change, but nevertheless, I would like to just get a good better sense of how the single lot exemption is in play and and who has easements over what in under existing conditions, if you could.
All right, Clark, do you have any information that you would like?
Nothing new, but I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing.
Can I can I ask Ms. Murray first before you make a motion? Ms. Murray, do you have any further information that you would like to state in the public record?
The only thing in this, this may actually have been included under Mr. Callahan's request for looking at the easements themselves that are in place here, but we've heard a number of people talk about where the public portion of Black Horse Lane ends and it comes into along a right of way and easement and existing driveway, whatever it is. I I think we want to focus in particular on what is that expansive pavement on the ground?
All right.
There's a lot of history that we haven't really delved into.
Right, so so the the so from the standpoint of the lack of the full history that we might wish to have in this context, would we then ask our legal counsel to provide that for us as it relates to what we're interested in? Or the project applicant be the person that we direct the questions to?
I think that that the applicant does the does the legal research that's requested and our council reviews it and then maybe does some additional research just to check to see if there's some other pieces of information because, I mean, I I spent a couple of hours a couple of years ago checking the the easements and the deeds and it's complicated in this particular case.
Certainly is.
So if this is not a public hearing per se, it's just
No, it's informational. We're trying to help.
I'm getting to, do we need to continue this if it's not a a public hearing? I'm getting to do we need to continue this if it's not a a public hearing? We're just reviewing the regulations and what's being proposed? Do we just let the applicant come back when they're ready?
I request that we continue at a specific time, please.
All right. Could you make a recommendation for? Well, first off, Mr. Watzke, how much time do you think would be useful for you to be able to conduct the investigations that have been requested? We don't want to squeeze you. It'd be much better to have more time than less to make sure we get everything first time.
I don't think it should take very much time at all. Actually, we've already done the title research, and and I think we can respond to the questions.
All right, then. Ms. Lynn, what do you see in the future?
Madam Chair, I'm going to address your question in one moment. First, I just wanted to address that after I told you there's no more comments in the chat, we did get two more, one by an unnamed and unaddressed Bernadette asking that we are not instructed to submit questions. I do want to state, as I stated at the beginning of this meeting when it is called to order, please insert your name and address into the Q and A function at which time we will address you. Moving forward, that is how as listed on the public meeting agenda, that is how we participate in this chat. Comments can also be directed to the planning board via email and distributed. So there are multiple opportunities for comment. With that said, there's another comment in the chat from an Eric Hewitt asking to clarify representation of Cedar Lane does not exist. Where is it drawn? So I'm just stating this for the record that these are other items that have been raised. With that said, I would suggest that while this isn't a public hearing, this item would be continued to the May twenty fifth meeting agenda no earlier than six thirty P M.
All right. Thank you for all of the members of the team working with Mr. Campbell, and we will see you in about a month.
Did we?
You need to vote on that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I move that we continue this to May twenty fifth at six thirty.
Second.
Mr. Brewer?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
We do have a number of I just want Lauren to know this, that there's a number of comments that arose in the chat after we concluded this. And we want to make sure we can collect this. This does this get basically logged, Lauren, the chats?
Yes, we'll have it. We'll have access to the log.
Okay.
We could also encourage members of the public to submit any any comments in writing to the planning board about what they they've seen or whatever their thoughts might be on this particular common driveway application.
Right, thank you. And that's a good recommendation. All right, so then let's move on to our next set of items. We have a series of five large house reviews, one with a land alteration special permit. And four of the five large house reviews submitted information this afternoon, which would require that we continue these four hearings because we did not have sufficient time to examine the information. So Lauren, I would like to ask you if it is appropriate to, rather than opening them all up and continuing them, to basically move them forward in time, or should we open each one of them up and then just continue them?
As they were advertised for this evening, we do need to read the public hearing notice and open the meeting. If you wish to continue, we can continue at that time, but we do need to administratively open them as was advertised.
All right, thank you then. Will you please begin by reading the large house review, the land alteration, both of them on Howard Gleason? The large house review for Forest Avenue Lot Two, three, three, six, Forest Avenue Lot Two.
Got to do one at a time. You got to do one at a time.
I'm just basically mentioning which ones they are, the forty four Little Harbor Harbor Road, and then the forty six Hobart.
Once we open and continue on the first one, then we would open and continue on the second.
Yes, I understand that. Would you like to begin?
I will begin.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will begin by opening. I'm going to read the public hearing notice for large house plan review for ninety Howard Gleason Road. Notice of public hearing class and planning board pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash five point four of the class zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight, three, eight, two, three, seven, six, one, seven, six, one, password zero, seven, one, zero, zero, nine on Wednesday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, at six thirty P M for a large house plan review for property being shown on Cohasset Assessors Map F five, thirty, twelve, ninety Howard Gleason Road, Cohasset M A oh, two, oh, two, five. The application is for a large house plan review for a raise and reconstruct of a new single family home with a total residential gross floor area of eight thousand and seventy square feet. The application is submitted by John and Jamie Burbow, courtesy of Patrick O'Hearn Architects. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Clerk's Office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Avenue, with the office hours is Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty A M to four thirty P M, Tuesday, eight thirty A M to seven P M, and Friday, eight thirty A M to one P M. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lind via email at L Lind at Cohasset M A dot org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Amy Glassmire, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you. Can I get a motion from one of the planning board members to continue?
Do we have any time constraints and
To when?
About when we have the the time limit to make a decision? I don't want it to have a decision by default.
Constructive approval.
Constructive, right.
So we 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 don't have the full documentation at this point.
It doesn't matter, Amy, if we have that can be argued by both sides, whether we have full documentation or not. Do are we under any time problem if we continue this?
Madam Chair, if I can respond to that, I certainly would invite Lauren to jump in if she sees this differently. But as I look at least under the large house review, there is no time restraint for the board to act. And we're also dealing with what Section eleven, the land alteration for this one. I don't see any time constraint there either. It's just a special permit.
That will have whatever the special permit can say.
Right, but you have in a special permit, you have time starts from when you actually open the public, when you close the public hearing to render a decision, rather. So I I don't see any particular time restraint for you right now on those two applications.
All right, thank you. So can I get a motion to continue?
Yeah, motion to continue to give me give me a timeline or a date.
So sorry, double here. I posed the board the question. The next two meetings you have in your agenda are May eleventh and May twenty fifth, May eleventh. The only item that we have set aside is a continued public hearing on common driver rules and regulations. The board's preference of which meeting you prefer.
I'll move that we continue it to May eleven of twenty twenty two at six thirty P M.
Second.
Mr. Brewer?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you very much.
And I just want to say in this and all of them, you know, the the rule about dumping stuff on the last minute, we take seriously. It's not fair to us to to send us stuff at four o'clock in the afternoon on the day of a hearing. We all have jobs. We just can't pick up and do our job when we get things at the last minute. And I I wish people would respect that more.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Ms. Lynn, would you please read the next public hearing land alteration special permit for ledge removal?
Yes, I will. Notice of public hearing class at planning board pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash eleven of the class zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight, three, eight, two, three, seven, six, one, seven, six, one, passwords, zero, one, zero, zero, nine on Wednesday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, at six thirty P M for a land alteration special permit for property being shown on Cohasset Assessors Map F five, thirty, twelve, ninety Howard Gleason Road, Cohasset M A, zero, two, zero, two, five. The application is for proposed removal of existing dwelling, garage, pool, and hardscape to replace with new dwelling, garage, pool, and hardscape involving above grade ledge removal of less than twelve ten cubic yards and soil to be removed of one thousand one hundred cubic yards. The application is submitted by John and Jamie Burbow, courtesy of Cavanaro Consultants. A copy of the application's plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Clerk's Office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Avenue, with office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty A M to four thirty P M, Tuesdays, eight thirty A M to seven P M, and Fridays, eight thirty A M to one P M. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lind via email at L Lind at Cohasset M A dot org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Amy Glassmire, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you. May I get a motion from the board to continue this? And Lauren, can you recommend a time?
I would recommend as well, May eleventh at six thirty.
To May eleventh, six thirty.
Okay. Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, thank you. Then is it is it appropriate or is it possible for us to postpone opening the Sawyer Street large house review application at this moment and move to the three others where we received information late today and open them and then continue them? Is that all right?
Is forty eight Sawyer Street okay because they got everything in?
That is correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, so then let's continue with the large house.
Lauren Lauren raised her hand.
Okay, Ms. Lynn.
I want to open it.
I'm sorry. You can proceed as you wish. Doing it again. You can proceed as you wish. I will say that the applicants are here for the hearing at forty eight Sawyer Street. So if you don't want to hold them up any longer, I would recommend that you take this first. The administrative portion can follow.
All right, that's that's a good recommendation. So please proceed and read the public hearing notice for a large house plan review filed by Colin Koch. Subject property is forty eight Sawyer Street.
Thank you. Notice of public hearing class at planning board pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash five point four of the Cohasset zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight, three, eight, two, three, seven, six, one, seven, six, one, password, zero, one, zero, seven, one, zero, zero, nine on Wednesday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, at six thirty P M for a large house plan review for property being shown on Cohasset Assessors Map E five, eighteen, zero, six, one. Forty eight Sawyer Street Class at Massachusetts, oh, two, oh, two, five. The application is for large house plan review for the renovation of a single family home with a total residential gross floor area of four thousand six hundred and four square feet. The application is submitted by Colin and Emma Koch. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Clerk's Office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Avenue, with office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty A M to four thirty P M, Tuesdays, eight thirty A M to seven P M, and Friday, eight thirty A M to one P M. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lind by email at L Lind at Cohasset M A dot org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Amy Glassmire, Chair, Planning Board. Without further ado, I will turn it over to the property owners and their architect, John Teriaki. Thank you.
Good evening, John Teriaki, Teriaki Architectural Design, and I'm here with the homeowners, Emma and Colin Koch. I will go ahead and share my screen, and I believe the coaches would like to make a a brief introduction before I get into the architectural aspects of the project.
All right, thank you, Mr. And Mrs. Koch. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everyone. Good evening. John, perfect. I think John has that up on the screen if everyone can see it, and and we can walk through the sort of the vision for for the property and the narrative, and then turn it over to John to kind of talk about some of the more architectural specifics. But but high level, you know, the idea for the project is to sort of breathe fresh life into a beautiful antique home on on Sawyer Street and and add additional living space and garage space to accommodate our our growing family of five and and soon to be six. High level kind of overview is that the first floor will expand west to incorporate a two car garage with a connecting mass. The secondary entrance from the driveway, along with a secondary stairway located within the garage, will access the expanded second floor. The mudroom area expands toward the back and also towards the kitchen. On the lighting front, we have one exterior light above each garage door, one exterior light above the rear entrance to the garage, one recessed light in the overhang of the back entry to the deck, one exterior light on the wall adjacent to the new entry, and one exterior light on the wall adjacent to the rear covered porch door. And we did include the lighting sheet for the specific lights that that we're planning to use. Moving on, we are going to have a family room addition, which will integrate with the kitchen area in that connecting mass. A covered porch is incorporated along the back wall, along with open decks that provide access to the backyard. The second floor will expand west towards the new garage with a new master bedroom and master bath, adjacent home office and laundry room also off the hallway extension. And then a bonus room will be above the garage access from the end of the hallway extension as shown in the plans. In terms of the exterior, the the plan is to paint it white like it is today, so to keep it consistent with the existing color. The the trim detail and roof pitch is designed to match the existing proportions of the home to keep that consistent as well. And then on the landscaping front, very minimal removal of of some minor shrubs, and there's a single, you know, call it six foot tree that will be moving slightly adjacent to the driveway, but we don't plan for extensive changes to landscaping, and there's no impact to the existing ledge. That that I believe is sort of a high level overview. John, do you want to just kind of talk about some of the the architectural changes?
That sounds good. Oh, go ahead, Emma. Were you saying something?
I just, oh, sorry.
Okay, um, so before I dive into architectural, one quick note, the dashed footprint here is the existing footprint of the house. And this double line footprint is the proposed addition, Sawyer Street on the left. And then this dash outline here is the existing asphalt paved driveway, which extends all the way to the back of the property as shown. And all of that behind the addition is being removed and replaced with pervious yard material. I just wanted to point that out in terms of how the project balances existing removing existing impervious material to balance off with the proposed, such that the project would not require a stormwater permit. The total areas, the existing residential gross floor area is about three thousand square feet with about three hundred fifteen square feet in the attic and about thirteen hundred and change for for each of the existing floors. And the proposed project increases the total residential floor area to forty six hundred square feet, adding some finished space over the garage, as well as enlarging both and first and second floors by about five hundred square feet each. Existing floor plan of the property, this time Sawyer Street is on our right, so it's it's flipped around compared to the site plan. There's an existing rear wing here that will be modified and expanded west as I'll show you in the proposed plan. Existing elevations showing the front view of the house as seen from Sawyer Street the the right or west side of the house, showing the rear wing on the right, existing rear elevation and existing left side elevation. Proposed floor plan of the first floor, as Colin mentioned, a family room extension and a mudroom connector reaching to the new proposed garage on the west side. We did leave separation between the original historic house and the addition to clearly indicate that this is basically a mass that stepping down and backward from Sawyer Street as we're proposing to expand it because we want to preserve the the dominance of the existing historic home and the wraparound porch, which is a really a signature feature of of this house. So everything that's happening is mostly concealed behind the existing house, including the family expansion, the modern connection and the garage, which is set back about seventy feet from the edge of Sawyer Street. Uh, the mudroom connection and the garage, which is set back about seventy feet from the edge of, uh, Sawyer Street. Second floor, as Colin mentioned, a master bedroom is an expansion of the existing wing, which leads to, um, additional bonus room space over the garage. Third floor remains unchanged. And here's just a, uh, a roof plan showing the different architectural moves where we're trying to help step the masses and the dormers in and create additional shadow lines so that this mass is not monolithic. And it steps up and down and it has interest visually, um, to complement the historic composition in the front. Here's the exist, uh, the proposed view from Sawyer Street. Uh, showing the, the garage and the adjacent wing. Again, this will be set back about seventy feet uh, from the, from the, uh, Sawyer Street curb. The proposed west side elevation showing the side view of the garage and then the dash line is kind of the connector beyond, uh, showing how it attaches to the main house. And then, uh, rear view of the, the back of the addition. And then the left side view, which is mostly unchanged compared to the existing. So with that, I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions about the architecture or other aspects of the project along with the coaches.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Koch, did you want to say something before, um, we start the, before the planning board members speak?
Uh, no, no, I was, no, 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 thank you though.
Okay, um, so let's begin then with, um, Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, um, uh, I, 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 uh, did take a look at this, um, at the street level. And, uh, you know, I, I think what, uh, the architect is doing is, is, uh, is an excellent um, knitting together of the historic, which is high quality, I think, a, a good, um, uh, participant in the street front, um, uh, currently, um, but his knitting together of the, of the design elements that are existing with, with what's proposed, I think is, is an excellent, uh, an, an excellent approach. Um, there, there appears to be enough distance between the neighbors on either side to the right and the left. Um, and attention to detail, uh, of the, of those, uh, of the uh, new addition, uh, garage addition side that I, I don't really see any impacts on the neighbors. Um, I did take a look at the, the light fixtures. Um, I mean, I think uh, from, they, they look fine. It's, I, I don't see anything that's, that, that jumps out at me as problematic with this particular large home review. Um, I think that what the team has put together and on behalf of their client is is, uh, is excellent, uh, in terms of circulation. The, you know, the main criteria that we have, uh, the massing is understood. Circulation, the lighting, um, and you know, it's a, it's a developed site. So in terms of the vegetation, uh, changes, I think are relatively, um, minimal. Um, so that the, the, the little barn garage that's in the back, does that, does that become, um, uh, the, the, the rainy day kids', uh, playhouse or how does that?
Yeah, ping pong table.
Okay.
Garden tools.
Storage.
Storage.
You can, you can never have enough.
And one on the way. So never enough storage.
That's great. Um, I think it's an excellent project. So I, I would recommend that we, um, approve it with, without any conditions other than the standard ones.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brewer, Mr. Callahan?
Uh, yeah, John, have you offered any, uh, comparisons to the size of the houses around? Now, we have to consider the scale relative to the neighbors and I just want to, that, you know, that should be standard operating procedure going forward of including that.
Uh, some size comparisons were submitted, um. I don't have the exact size data, but there were some pictures submitted along with the application of other, other houses with attached garages.
I, I saw that in the package.
Yeah.
Yeah, the picture is, I'm looking for actual square footage in comparison.
Can pull that up really quickly. Um, I confident they're all in the four to five thousand square foot range, but let me just.
Yeah, I just, we, it's something, it's one of those things, it's one of those things to go through the motions for.
Sure. Twenty-four Sawyer is forty-two hundred and thirteen square feet.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see.
Sixty.
Sixty-three.
The one on the corner of Ripley is seventy-five hundred square feet. I know I measured it like fifteen years ago.
Uh, sixty-three is forty-three, sixty-five. Uh, thirty-six. Thirty-six is thirty-five, forty-nine, although it looks bigger than that, but.
But they're probably not kind of the barn.
Yeah, um, forty-one. Forty-one is thirty-four, forty-seven. Forty-two. Forty-two is forty-eight, eighty-seven.
All right, I'm, I'm getting the picture. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
So I mean, with that, you know, to me, the, the scale requirement is met. So I, I don't have a real problem with this.
All right, thank you. Um, I would just like to, uh, ask because it, it went by very quickly. You mentioned, uh, stormwater um, permitting and I didn't understand your, that your house is on sewer, is that correct?
Yes.
So.
It's on septic.
Septic. Oh, it's on septic.
Yes.
And so you indicated that there was not a need for stormwater review.
Yeah.
Could you be a little bit more specific about that?
Sure, yeah, we worked with Grady Consulting and he just wanted to verify that this project didn't go over the two requirements, um, which are staying below a net increase of five hundred square feet of impervious, um, coverage and also without alter, altering more than five thousand square feet of land. So you can see on the site plan up in the upper left that Grady Consulting did all the math required for that and consulted with conservation and, um, both of those requirements, we fell well, well below both of those requirements.
Thank you. We, we want to try to keep our boards marching along in the right order. So, and, and I recognize that you're also removing some, uh, impervious surface, which will certainly add to, um, the reduction in, uh, stormwater issues. All right, um, planning board members, can I get a, it sounds to me as if there is a, um, unanimity on the board regarding the approval of this large house review. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve without conditions other than the standard ones and, and wish the applicant good luck with their project.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Callahan, can I get a second? Did you second it?
He's muted.
Muted because I'm eating popcorn.
Okay, all right. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to help you out on this one.
I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm going to ask for vote, um, uh, Clark Brewer.
Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan?
I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I. Thank you very much. And thanks for turning all your information in on time.
Our pleasure. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, let's continue with our, um, set of additional large home reviews. And, um, I'm going to ask Ms. Lynn to please continue with the public hearing notice for a large house re, plan review filed by Christine and Blake Martini. Subject property is three three six Forest Avenue, lot two.
Thank you. Notice of Public Hearing, Coasset Planning Board, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty A and Section flat three hundred dash five point four of the Coasset zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight three eight two three seven six one seven six one. Password zero seven one zero zero nine on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM for a large house plan interview for property being shown on Coasset Assessor's Map, C two nine five, lot two of three thirty-six Forest Avenue, new home address to be assigned. Coasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for a large house plan review for a new single family home with a total residential gross floor area of three thousand eight hundred and fifteen square feet. The application is submitted by Christine and Blake Martini, care of Teriaki Architectural Design LLC. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Clerk's Office at Coasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue with office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lin via email at Llin.coassetma.org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Amy Glassmeyer, Chair of Planning Board.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to continue?
Uh, Madam Chair, can I just say one thing before?
Yes, sir.
The meeting is continued. Um, we submitted all the documents for this application in early March and the only thing that was submitted today was just an up, update on the site plan, which concluded stormwater permit. And there were some stormwater only comments, like an additional test bit. That was shown out. That was the only updated information. I just want to kind of clarify that. Everything else has already been submitted.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. But in order to maintain uh, continuity, I, I will continue this hearing. Um, uh, can I, Lauren, can we get a time and, um, for this, uh, hearing continuing?
I would suggest May eleventh at six thirty PM.
All right, thank you very much.
Continue to May eleventh, six thirty.
Second?
Clark Brewer, I.
I didn't second it because I think.
Oh, I thought, I thought Amy seconded it.
No, uh, no, I didn't.
The chairman can second.
Yeah, you, you're going to have to, Amy.
Okay, I, I will second it, uh, and roll call, Mr. Brewer?
I.
Mr. Callahan? Amy Glassmeyer.
May. I think we should go ahead tonight, but that's okay.
You mean with this hearing?
Too late.
I mean, given, given the.
We just voted to continue, Tom.
I know, I just, but I just, I, my vote was no because I think we should have gone forward because of what, the way John explained what the change was. It's one thing to get a whole new site plan and landscape plan like some of these other things we got today. Uh, this one was really minor, but that's okay, whatever.
Okay, I, just for continuity stake and for, also for comparison practice, I, I feel like I have to do that.
There's a sense of fairness involved, I think.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
And we also don't know what the next two are going to do. So, um, let's, uh, Ms. Lynn, can I ask you to please open the public hearing for a large house plan review filed by Sally Weston Associates for subject property forty-four Little, Little Harbor Road?
Yes. Notice of Public Hearing, Coasset Planning Board, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash five point four of the Coasset zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight three eight two three seven six one seven six one password zero seven one zero zero nine on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM for a large house plan interview for property being shown on Coasset Assessor's Map, D two twenty-one fifty-seven, forty-four Little Harbor Road, Coasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for a large house plan review for a renovation of a single family home for a new total residential gross floor area of six thousand and six feet. The application is submitted by Richard and Jacqueline Whalen, care of Sally Weston and Associates Incorporated. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Clerk's Office at Coasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue with Coasset, I'm sorry, with office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM, four thirty PM, Tuesdays, eight thirty AM to seven PM and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lin via email at Llin.coassetma.org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Amy Glassmeyer, Chair of Planning Board.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to continue this and can we get a date?
Well.
I would suggest also May eleventh at six thirty.
Motion to continue, May eleventh, six thirty.
As a second, um, roll call, Clark Brewer?
Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan?
I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I. Thank you very much. Next public hearing, please, for a large house plan review filed by Sally Weston Associates. The subject property is forty-six Hobart Lane.
Notice of Public Hearing, Coasset Planning Board, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash five point four of the Coasset zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight three eight two three seven six one seven six one. Password zero seven one zero zero nine on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM for a large house plan review for property being shown on a Coasset Assessor's Map, S three twenty-nine fifty-one, forty-six Hobart Lane, Coasset, MA zero two zero two five. The application is for the large house plan review for raise and reconstruct of a single family home for a new total residential gross floor area of eight thousand five hundred and forty-nine square feet. The application is submitted by Thomas Riordan, care of Sally Weston and Associates Incorporated. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Clerk's Office at Coasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue with office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesdays, eight thirty AM to seven PM and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lin via email at Llin.coassetma.org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Amy Glassmeyer, Chair of Planning Board.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to May eleventh.
Second, Ms., uh, roll call, Mr. Brewer?
Clark Brewer, I.
Mr. Callahan?
I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I. Thank you very much. All right, so we have reached the end of our uh, hearings and we don't have any committee liaison updates. I will ask the planning director if she has updates.
The only updates I'm going to give. It's really throwing me for a loop having three, three of myself on here at once.
Wait, Mr. Papage has his hands up.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that.
It goes up and it goes down. So I don't know if he has something.
All right, um. Mr. Papage, would you like to speak? You'll need to be, um, promoted.
No, he's there. He's been promoted. He's been.
Right now, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, this is Sean Papage, uh, Sean Papage, Landscape Architecture, two twenty-two North Street. I was calling just because I had not heard, uh, the intent of why, uh, the proposals and the hearings were being continued. Um, one thing that I wanted to note is most of that information or a lot of that information was coming into Lauren today was a result of Conservation Commission hearings from five or six days ago. So it was, some information was coming in and most of it was pretty minor in terms of changes. So I wasn't sure if there was notification that all these were going to be or not. I'm just kind of I'm asking this guy, I really don't know.
So, so the, the, the boards in general, across the boards, do not accept information um, uh, that does not have less than a week of time for individual board members to review. And we try to maintain that, uh, practice because we won't be able to do a good job of looking at materials. And in the cases that we were going to be observing, they were very substantial. There was a lot of, of issues that we would need to be very mindful of.
Would that be in a situation that if you happen to have a co, a, uh, Conservation Commission hearing six days prior to the planning board meetings? And if you are reacting and making your revisions based on Conservation Commission direction, does that automatically mean you are, you should assume you're going to be continued for the following one? I, I really am asking for point of information, really.
Right, no, that, that's fine. So Lauren, you, let, I'll let you first comment. I mean, for us, because we have jobs and we have other things to do, it really is the case, we have to review every one of these things and every page. So that's, that's on our end. That's what we hold up. But it also is the case that the planning office itself is completely slammed. So, you know, you just saw five hu, large house reviews. We've never ever done that before. So it, it, you know, we just, we can't, the flow is intense.
Did, did you have to redo plans as a result of the Concom hearing?
There was, uh, we had to change some of the, uh, grade elevations, but honestly, if you would have been looking for a large home review, you would have had to been pointed, we would have had to point that out to you. So it was minimal, I would say. Brendan is on here. Actually, every single one of these projects would have been extremely minimal for every single one of these. And I, and actually the one that was, um, forty-four Hobart Lane, there was no changes at all, uh, from what I stand. We had the same one that we submitted to Conservation Commission dated the fourteenth. It was even dated prior to that and all they're waiting on is a little bit of soil information and so it'll be approved in the next hearing. So that's where all this is coming as a major surprise, but it's probably because I just don't understand the process or something.
In fairness, in fairness, don't assume that there's smooth communication between knowing what one board does and another board does. And it's, it's, you know, it's incumbent on you if you're going to make a change. And it's minor, do it quickly and get it to us, but we. And it's minor, do it quickly and get it to us, but we, we don't know if it's minor or major when we get it in, in our office necessarily and, you know, again, it's. Tonight, you know, I, I was prepared to let a minor thing go, you know, but we're, we're trying to apply this rule uniformly because it's a common problem. It's, it's a lack of respect frankly to the boards that we don't get information ahead in sufficient time. I know you're not intending that, I get that, but that, in some cases, it really is. And so, you know, we have to, you know, so tonight we're applying that rule uniformly to everybody. Whether it's minor or major. Now, you know, are, are you and, and John before you giving us some thought about that? Yeah, maybe, but. You know, tonight we're applying it uniformly to everybody.
In each situation, we were being responsible and they were responding to Conservation Commission input and. Why the, why forty-four Little Harbor Road was tossed, I have no idea. That's, that's a mystery to me and I was getting a call from Sally Weston on, on the other end that I couldn't take because. I have no idea that why that would have been happening. That's, that was in front of you many, a long time ago. It was at least in the board, so. Everything else that we have is minor, but when you couldn't open up the hearing, we couldn't explain that it was minor. We're reacting Conservation Commission's directions and thinking that we're being responsible. By emailing you a new color rendering or something along those lines.
I, I, I get it, I get it. And I, I appreciate the comments and I, Madam Chair, I'd like to discuss this when we're done. Before we close our proceedings tonight.
We have the folks on our end of the business that are, we're trying to take care of.
I get it, I, I get it and, and it's always a problem when you're dealing with multiple boards at the same time, I get it. I've been in your position, believe.
Uh, thank you. And, and we don't do this lightly, we do it really on behalf of the applicant. And we don't know what comes in late and we don't know if we have to look at everything or we can take somebody's. Word at it and it's going to be fine. And we haven't seen the, all of those projects, we haven't seen anything on them. So we have to do a thorough review from the very beginning, bottom up. So.
I'll just say this, that we can't, we can't do things blindly either and there's some common sense and if. If sometime the change is inconsequential and let's say, as Mr. Papage says, in this case, it's just a grade change. To deal with Concom, it doesn't impact the large home review. I mean, we should have some discrimination about what, what the significance of the change is because. Backing up and kicking the can down the road doesn't help our schedule.
Right.
I, and I don't disagree with that, but, but that was how today went.
I get it.
Mr. Sullivan, no, Ms., let me ask Ms. Lynn first.
Thank you. So I just wanted to add some color to, to tonight. I think tonight was an unusual circumstance in which four out of the eight applications on the agenda sent over. Between different applicants across different consultants, multiple documents and that's why the board, given the, the things that accumulated throughout today. It was just too much in, in total across the different applications on the agenda tonight for the board to, to have a fair assessment of what was new and what wasn't. You know, in addition, I don't, I don't have the time to turn around and, and give that detail to them. Nor do I have the opportunity to put that thing on the website, all of the things on the website that came in. Through the different applications for the public to consume, so that is, I believe, why the board made this determination, given that there is just so many applications that this happened to.
Thank you. And, and the point she made about the public, that's really important because the public, we post that information for the public. We get it, we can get it without having to post it, but the public is, has to be informed. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So just to reiterate what, what Sean had said, but, but also, I mean, I mean, I, I wouldn't have submitted new plans today had I known it was going to be continued. I at least would have thought it would have been opened, you know, we would have done a presentation and closing, not closing, but continue it. Knowing that there was going to be changes made to the plan. I mean, I, 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 believe me, I, I know what shoes you're, you're in, I'm, I know, I chair the Noel Planning Board, I should actually be there tonight. But, and nobody likes new information coming in, you know, within a week or so, but had I known it was going to be continued, I wouldn't have submitted new plans. And I was, would have went and opened the hearing, you know, had the architect discuss, discuss the project. And say that we have comments from Conservation, we're working on them, we'll see you at the next meeting. That would have been a much better, I think. Path to go through than, than just continuing everything and not being able to open everything, anything up. That's just a, just a thought.
We appreciate that and, and. We have adopted this practice because when we did it the other way, it was impossible. I mean, a whole, a whole large house review can have twenty documents that we have to look at. And we don't even know necessarily which one is the one that's the most important when you get it at the last minute, so we appreciate it and. And I guess we'll all, we're all learning from this.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, okay, so thank you and. So Ms. Lynn, you were going to provide some commentary about updates?
Thank you. I wanted to just give you a highlight of upcoming dates to keep in mind. Monday, May second is annual town meeting. There are no zoning articles moving forward to this annual town meeting, but as citizens of Cohasset, I do strongly encourage that you attend. It's taking place in person at the Cohasset High School Auditorium. And then our next meeting agenda, our next meeting is May eleventh, followed by May twenty-fifth. And then important to note that we have modified our June schedule. We will meet on June first instead of June eighth. And that is the only change. We will then resume our, our standard schedule as was set out at the beginning of the year. So our next meeting in June would be the twenty-second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for making that the first, Lauren, rather than the fifteenth. Helps me a lot.
And, and just for the public's interest and members of the, the local government in Cohasset. The reason that we are changing the dates for June is because we are having a celebration in honor of the fire chief who is retiring. All right, other comments?
I can make a motion to adjourn.
You can, and I will second that motion.
All right, Clark Brewer.
No, I'm in favor of it, so I.
Tom Callahan.
I will choose to be in favor of it as well.
Amy Glassmire, I'm just going to sit here and wait you guys out.
I think a majority voted, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
See you next time.
You, Carol and Angela.
Good night, everyone.
Good night all, thank you.
Bye-bye.